So, somebody make a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Alright, I guess we'll go back into the regular meeting. Pledge of Allegiance is first.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. I do not see how our Karen Anne.
Karen Anne could not make it this evening.
Okay, alright.
She had an unexpected commitment.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to public hearings. Disorderly property ordinance.
The disorderly property ordinance.
Would somebody like to open up the public hearing?
I'd move to open up the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Alright.
So, did you have a copy of it in your packet?
I do not think so.
I had an old copy that first passed out.
I thought it was in the... That was my fault. Could you go in on my desk and grab... well, actually, Max, can you go grab what we were handed out at the DOT the other day? It's on top of my desk. This is an ordinance, and I'm going to get it up on my computer here, my phone. That's going to address, and I was hoping that Ms. Jimmy Hunt would be here tonight. So just let me get... So this is creating Chapter 15, a disorderly property ordinance, and the purpose of this is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the town of Waldeboro by eliminating the proliferation of properties harboring occupants who disturb the peace and tranquility of their neighborhoods. So, another reason we were having Karen Anne here tonight is the one, she brought it to our attention. Rockland had been doing this. And this is not a property maintenance ordinance. This is truly a disorderly person's ordinance. And this would be administered by the police chief. So I will give you some disorderly activity examples that is, that are within this ordinance. And this means situations created originating or conducted within a building or within the boundaries of the property on which the building is located by the owner, occupants, tenants, or customers thereof, or the visitors to any such owner, occupant, tenant, or customer, which would unreasonably disturb the community. Loud music, loud or otherwise disruptive gatherings, excessive loud or unnecessary noises, altercations occurring on the property such as fighting, brawling, or similar activities, out of control individuals, or disorderly conduct, drug or alcohol-related offenses, or other similar activities. So, disorderly event means any 24-hour period commencing at noon and ending upon noon the following day, which a police officer observes, or the police department receives one or more complaints of a disorderly activity in which the police department responds and substantiates that disorderly activity. There's a notice, there's a whole process laid out in this ordinance. And what it really does, and I think why it will help, is that there are several places in town, and we heard an example at our last meeting, of places that are very disorderly repeatedly, and the police are there consistently, and the neighbors are consistently complaining. This really holds the owner of those properties their feet to the fire. And we did put in their protections because some owners may start to evict people because they're being disorderly, but it does allow for protection for people who are in the eviction process. But it, from what I've read, I talked to several towns that have this when we were researching the ordinance and the verbiage for it, and it really has made a difference in some areas. And again, I think it's not something that's property-related as far as property maintenance issues. So it doesn't mean if you have a lot of cars in your yard, or your yard is not as tidy as people might want it. This is truly disorderly offenses. And the fines. So the process is, there's a notice that has to occur, not more than seven days after the second disorderly event at the property. The police chief self-served the owner with a copy of this article and a disorderly event notice advising the owner that the police department has documented a second disorderly event. In the event the property has accumulated at this time two disorderly events within 180-day period, the police chief will notify the owner of the property has been classified as a disorderly property, and that the owner is in violation of the article and is subject to a remediation process. And the remediation process is, once it's been classified as a disorderly property by the police chief, the owner shall be required to undertake a plan of remediation to abate and eliminate that public nuisance. And the owner has to meet, or the authorized agent has to meet with the police chief within 14 days of the notice. And at that time, with the meaning of the owner, the owners, the owner shall provide to the town a list of all dwelling units, a list of names of all tenants and other authorized occupants, a copy of the terms and conditions in any lease for the property. A complete, we have to provide a complete record of all the municipal actions. And at that time, there will be a remediation agreement, and the owner or agent must agree to take effective measures to address the disorderly property. And if the owner enters into a remediation agreement acceptable with the police chief, he may delay an enforcement action if, in the opinion of the police chief, the owner is making a good faith effort to implement. The disorderly property classification shall be removed from the property by the police chief upon the chief's determination that the passage of 180 days from the date of the last disorderly event has passed, payment of all civil penalties and costs arising from enforcement, and verification by town officials that all deficiencies, if any, discovered during any inspection have been corrected. And the civil penalty can be from $5,000 to $1,000. Each violation on each separate, for each separate provision of the article, and each day of violation. So, it's significant.
I was just, I had a couple of comments to make there, little nips. I mean, we're referring, for example, somewhere in here to Cumberland County, I think.
That's, yeah, I took that out.
Has that been taken care of?
That's been taken care of, yeah.
And who's in charge of deciding what the fine is? Is that the police chief?
That's civil. So if we go that route, that would be applied civilly.
So...
We go to court.
We go to court.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so the judge imposes that.
Correct, but we have what it can be up to.
Okay. And do we want to suggest somewhere in here that land, that lessors make sure that this ordinance is a part of their lease agreements? So that people who move into these places at least have been informed by their rental agreement?
We...
That if they misbehave or do anything that is in here, they're potentially liable.
So, I have had this question to me before, never in Maine. We do not have the authority to make somebody put something in their rental agreement, is my... And Stan, maybe, have you ever had that experience here in Maine as a CEO?
I have not, no.
Is it worth asking?
I can ask the attorney. I would be doubtful that we could do that. I mean, we don't even, well, maybe after tonight we'll have a rental, some type of a life safety hazard ordinance.
And I would like to speak up, I would think that that could be added to that, if you would like to do that, as part of that ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So I like that, I think it's a great ordinance. I think it's good we have it. It gives our police some, something to act on.
It gives some more teeth, because I think that's one of the particular site that the Mrs. Ms. Hunt was talking about the last time. That has been an ongoing issue, and it's repeat offenders, week after week after week.
And it takes up a lot of our guys' time.
It does.
Is there any danger of infractions such as fireworks or barking dogs?
Well, that would be, that would be the loud noises, and those are violations of ordinances we already have in place. So the fireworks ordinance is an ordinance we have in place, and so are barking dogs.
This would fall under that?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's a biggie.
Well, it is, and that's, it's hard, because you want to be fair to the landlord, and I appreciated your comments when we first started this, is you could have a landlord who's really trying to address the situation. And I think that's where it's at the discretion of the chief. If he meets with the landlord and the landlord says, "Look, here's my eviction proceeding, here's what I've been doing", you know that's the case.
Okay.
And it's hard, you know, I think this is the hardest thing in municipal government, is to regulate neighborly good behavior. It is very hard to regulate good neighborly behaviors. And this sort of addresses some of our major issues that we've had. And I just want to thank Karen Anne for bringing it to our attention, because it really spurred from something that she discovered.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is any more, the select board have any other comments? Seeing none. Would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
And I will find out from the attorney about adding that.
Okay.
And if it changes anything, we can take that up at the next meeting. But this would then appear on our June warrant.
On the June warrant.
Now we got to act on it as well. Would somebody, somebody like to make a motion to approve the disorderly property ordinance?
I think Julie's gonna make some...
So you want to wait on doing that?
You gotta wait until...
We can, if you want to approve it, and if there is no change, it's on. But we're gonna have to go over the warrants at our April, first April meeting to get it on, make sure everything's all good.
So is it better to put it?
So do you like to table it?
It's up to you guys.
For the warrant?
I don't think you're gonna be able to put it in the ordinance, but if you do, for some reason, we can always revisit it. It's up to you guys.
Okay, I'd move to approve it, subject to Julie's review of the attorney on whether we can put language in there that talks about including a reference to the ordinance in local lease agreements. And if she, if we can, then we move forward with it, and get it on the warrant. Is that clear enough, that motion?
So what you're saying is, if it can't change, it goes on the warrant as we discussed.
That's right.
And we'll review it again at our first meeting in April. If it changes, we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
I wish you'd made that motion, because I'll...
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, discussion? Alright, now the only issue I have with that is, a lot of the leases are online. You don't get them from the town office. So, somebody may not know that, that they need to give that to their rentee, their tenant, before they sign a lease. So I don't know how you would go about ensuring that that person, that tenant got that.
Enforcement's an issue.
Yep.
And I don't want to get into the business of handing out leases at the town office.
No, you don't.
Yes, and that's where I...
Could it be included in the ordinance as a suggestion, as opposed to a requirement? I wasn't intending it to be a requirement anyway, I just thought it would be some, a reference is what I think I said.
Yep.
A reference to the town ordinance, it's... No, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, because any of the leases that I've, we've ever printed off have come right from, right from online.
How do you get the word out? How do you get the word out then? How do you make sure that...
I think you get the word out when you have an issue, and the first visit, they're handed the ordinance, and their first...
I think that'd probably be the best way to do it, is potentially, if there is an issue, the police department has one of them to hand right to them.
Ninety-five percent of landlords and tenants are, this is never going to apply to.
You're right.
It's the five percent that...
Is that something we could make possible, is if the police...
Oh, they would have it, yeah.
Have it and say, "Look, this is your first time, this is the ordinance, and this is what can happen."
So this isn't a preventative, this is a...
Well, hopefully, the Lincoln County News and our new, our new reporter will put it in the newspaper.
Yeah.
And he'll chat about it.
That might work for a couple of years.
It might, but I mean, unfortunately, I mean, we can put it on our website, we can put it on Facebook, but ultimately, it's going to be... And can I be honest with you? The landlords that are gonna need this are not looking on Facebook, and they're not looking on...
You're right.
They're not looking on our town website.
My motion was not seconded, was it?
Yes, it was, because we went into discussion.
Would you withdraw your second?
I will.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so your motion is, you got to make a new motion.
I guess my motion is to simply approve it as discussed with the request that Julie looked into the...
Whether it can be...
How we implement it.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I second that.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Moving along, any adjustments to the agenda?
I have one, if it's amenable, and that is that Ruben is here tonight to talk about the CTC and folding that into the EDC, and I was wondering if we could have that discussion tonight.
Yep, should we put that under new business in 10.3?
10.3.
Do I hear a motion for a second? Bob's made the motion basically.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? So that is added. Any citizens' comments? Oh, you got to say something, Ruben.
Hi, how are you?
Any select board comments, Bob?
Just a couple of things. I just learned today that someone on Hope Road is using Starlink.
Excellent.
They installed it last week. And they're getting pretty decent service. It cost them 500 bucks to purchase the dish. Probably have someone call, come and install, they've got it on the ground right now. Haven't put it on a roof anywhere. But they're still getting, they're still getting, I think they said they're getting 50, 50 or 60 down and five up, and that's without even putting it on the roof. And it's supposed to give you 100 or 200 down. And they're paying 99 bucks a month for internet using Starlink. It's not as, it's not nearly as good as Fiverr, but if you got nothing, it's better than nothing, I'll tell you.
It's upstairs, you have nothing, yeah.
Yeah. And just a reminder to check your trees for brown tail. Brown tail moth month is soon to be at an end, so I thought I'd say that. And that's all I've got.
Colonel?
We already talked about that I attended the police bargaining, and that was an eye-opener.
Yep.
It was interesting. And I really appreciated that, because, you know, I was able to see, you know, the person from the union, the police over here, and Julie, and, you know, take it in, and, you know, it was, it was, it was a good thing to watch. The second thing I have is Sylvania Committee Meeting, March 7th, at 4:30, right here.
Cool. Will?
I don't have anything this week.
Okay. Alright. Town manager?
I have some things. I would like to make sure everybody saw it on Facebook, and there is a link to it onto our website, is that the dedication nominations for the town report are open, please make them, get them in, because...
We have two dedications, right?
We typically do two, but you can, you know, that's your purview, so if we have three very deserving folks, you never know. But it's, we've been trying to do two. So, that is open. And, couple of things I'm really excited about. Budget season is upon us. We're gonna be budgeting, the most wonderful time of the year starts March 10th. The books will be out Thursday, and I think that's our third year running, that we will have the books out in time, a couple of weeks in advance of when our first budget meeting is, so I'm excited about that. I'm gonna give you just a little sneak preview into the budget and let you know that we are now $1,195 above our target surp, well, I call it surplus number, but our fund balance where we want to be, $1,195. So we have exceeded where our target budget fund balance should be. And that's great.
That is great.
I don't know that you've ever done that. I haven't done the research on it. I know you haven't, it was a lot less when I first started, so I, that's like my gold star for the day, maybe the week. But that's huge, because you know I'm a bit of a conservative when we do our budgeting, and I'm really excited about that. And I'd like to thank Peg Tyne, our finance director, for all of her hard work, because I know that's been a personal goal of ours, and we've achieved it, and there was a little bit of a happy dance, and I pointed it out again to Peg today, and she's like, you know, I hadn't really given it, like, I thought about it, but I didn't really think about it, but it's just because I'm too excitable. So she didn't really have a choice. The other exciting thing that happened, that I'm really excited about, and I have to give a shout-out to the Dave Allen of the Maine DOT, traffic engineer extraordinaire. He came down, and we had a two-and-a-half hour meeting, Max?
It was a long meeting.
It was a long meeting, and it all stemmed from the intersection of Route 220 and Main Street and Jefferson Street. And I just was excited beyond belief. So as you know, over the years, we've talked about that intersection, and finally, they sent out their traffic study team, they did a traffic count, and we met with them. We're gonna have a public discussion about this. Hopefully, we can do that maybe in the next meeting or the following meeting and get people out, but I'd like to really get a lot of the downtown property owners and business owners, and I'd like it to be more than just, "Hey, we're having this meeting", I'd actually like to get it out, you know, and send them an invitation. But they came up with some really great traffic calming ideas, and the best part was John Dagle agreed. So it was John Dagle, myself, Max, and the DOT. Bob, I think you came, because you were called away, and we just had a great time.
It was a good meeting.
And what was even more exciting to me is, there is going to be some traffic calming measures which will help with the speed in the downtown area. But the intersection, I think, with what they have planned will make a big difference. And, and why this is important is, it's gonna be a partnership, hopefully, between the state and, and the town. They were planning on doing some handicapped improvements this spring. We just have to let them know if it's okay with select board to hold off, because all those improvements would then have to be torn up, because we're on schedule to have them replaced. And we have to develop the plan that we want.
And don't we have to let them know before the end of March?
I have to let them know soon. So I think we should table those handicapped improvements, because we're going to be doing other improvements. That was John's recommendation. And the program that we're using is relatively new program, but the state will put in 50% of the match, and we'll put in the other 50%. So, and it includes, I'm gonna put this up on our website, but it will include bumping out areas downtown at the intersection, narrowing the travel paths a little bit. And unfortunately, it's gonna impact parking, because a big portion of the site problems
is from the parking.
Is, is from the parking, and that's, that's a hard thing. But it's going to make it safer. And one of the things that I found absolutely interesting in these traffic counts was the number of vehicles.
Unbelievable.
Just from coming from Friendship, it was 5,000.
Thirty-five, 3,500 a day.
3,500 a day.
Going from...
Going one way, and...
Friendship Street to Jefferson Street.
And then Jefferson to Friendship was 25, so there's 5,000 car passing just up and down Friendship to Jefferson, and then another 2,500 each way on Main Street. So when you figure how many times we have cars passing through downtown, it's, it's truly, it's truly, it was, it was really interesting. But one of the other things they brought up, and these were 12-hour, 12-hour volume counts on September 15th, so figure it wasn't even...
It's after Labor Day.
After, it was after Labor Day. But while they were here, because we thought that was, the meeting was over, and I'll just give you a couple of hints. They considered a traffic signal, always stop, and alternate, but then their recommendation were alternatives that keep Main Street as free-flowing, and, and that was, you know, reduce parking, signage, markings, crosswalk bump outs, and speed tables. So, you know, when we have the meeting, we'll get into all of those things. And they did analysis on all of this, but then we went on to, because this is not the most dangerous intersection that we have in town, just so everybody's aware. It goes back to the Mangtown...
Old Augusta.
Old Augusta. And...
Kayler's Corner.
Kayler's Corner. And they made some other suggestions for the Route 235 Mangtown Road. So serious injury, it appears that running the stop sign crashes from Mangtown Road appears to be what is reported in the police report as causes. So they're suggesting the flashing lights on the stop signs there. Route 32 and Main Street, which is Kayler's Corner, that's actually number two. Similar angle crashes to this intersection. And it's interesting, because you would think, when you're sitting there, that it's the problem looking up the hill where your sight is. It's not, it's down the hill, and their theory is that you're so worried about uphill, you're not looking down.
If you're coming up 32, those telephone poles are in the way.
Mm-hmm.
They really need to be moved, because I had the same situation the other day. I started creeping out as I realized it, trying to get beyond that telephone poles. I'm patway out into the traveling, just trying to look around those telephone poles.
They have some suggestions for that, and also Route 220 and Old Augusta Road, again, the flashing lights seem to have really helped with that, but again, they were talking about potentially a hanging, a hanging light there, you know, flashing hanging light. So, it was just nice, I mean, we had their attention for two and a half hours. And it just, it was really great, and I just want to thank Dave and his team. I don't remember all their, all of their names, but it was very informative, and I thought they did a really nice job.
I'm just amazed you got them here. I don't know how you did it.
It's magic.
Well...
But I was just glad to have them, and I don't think we need the entire team. And I, like I said, I will post this on, on our website, but we'll set up a meeting and invite people downtown to come on up and have a chat. Because it is, it's gonna be a lot of changes, and if we're talking about speed tables, that's gonna slow down traffic, but we want to assure, we were assured of certain things. We were given suggestions for where residents could go and observe some of these speed tables in action. It's not like the old speed bumps where you get them. It's, it's much quieter. And some of that will really help with the speeding, that we get a lot of complaints about downtown, and just give people more time to react. The reaction times that you have with the site distances down at that corner are interesting, too. So, but it was exciting. I wish you had been here, Will. Unfortunately, you were not with us, but it was, it was an exciting time.
Cool. Consent calendar, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, for the second time in, I think, two months, we've had a disposition of records that our town clerk has just done an amazing job. She's going through a lot of records and doing her due diligence to keep the ones we need to keep and should keep, and dispose of those that we don't have to keep and are really redundant. But she's doing a great job, and I just, we've... But she's doing a great job and I just, we very much appreciate it.
Anything else? Hearing done. All those in favor? Alright, new business, medical marijuana ordinance.
Max.
Z. Max.
Z. Max Johnstone. A plentiful planner.
So members of the select board should have received a copy of this. And Stan Waltz is in the audience tonight. There's additional questions for him. Essentially, this is just, uh, something that we've always kept talking about, but never have actually fully gone through with. And it's just creating a licensing ordinance similar to what we have for alcohol, but for medical marijuana. Uh, this is so that there's just a process for caregivers and their related cultivation facility. And that's essentially it.
I just have a question if I can ask it. There's a reference in here to temporary locations.
Right.
Um, in paragraph four. And I I just don't understand how that works when you have security concerns, building outside like concerns. How can you sell marijuana at a temporary location and still fall within the guidelines?
So that's, that's referencing an individual who may say, I'm going to be, uh, having my spot here. Where the main operations are gonna be. And then they're gonna try and have like a little stand at the local farmer's market every week. And think that that's some exemption. Uh, this is just to cover the bases saying, no, if you're setting up a shop, you're setting up the shop here where there are the security. Concerns. There is no temporary thing like that. Uh, when I, when they were marijuana committee, uh, one of the members was concerned that someone was just gonna set up like a little. Car stand on the side of the road and just meet someone there. Uh, the deliveries are one thing, but setting up a horrible spot is a different thing.
Okay, so the restriction is applicable to that kind of business. In other words, they're not allowed.
Right.
Okay, got it. I didn't read it the right way. Thank you.
Now, did you say in this that? Caregivers would have to get a license as well?
Right, a regular medical marijuana caregiver.
Well, don't they get one from the state anyways?
They get one from the state, but they don't do anything with us.
And you want them to?
Right, yeah. And Stan, do you wanna take over for that bit, just to explain it?
It would help the police and us to know where they are and if we do a registration, we can just charge them like fifty dollars or whatever. And then, uh, we can get a list of which houses have them. There's a, a lot of different reasons, but, uh. There's quite a few in Walderboro. Our last council was over twenty caregivers. We have two storefronts. And that's all we can have in Walderboro. It was a ordinance, uh, for lack of an ordinance, because they were in before the law took effect. Couple of years ago. Basically, that's what that's for.
So, so ju- it just, this just affects new caregivers?
No.
Are you gonna go?
All.
You're gonna go, you're gonna go back and tell them they need to have a license? Have a license.
Because it's also to help hold them accountable in case there is some falsified information. Because there's the slight floor process at the bottom where if a year's gone by and there's been some disorderly conduct that's happened. Then we can at least apply that to the license renewal. Bob also has a question if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Bob. So this is kinda like the approval of the liquor license process. I mean, it's. The clerk looks at the application, says everything's there, send it to the select board, they review it and they vote on it.
Correct.
Okay. There's a reference in here to lock boxes.
Uh, which number was that?
Four, three, one, two. And I'm not sure I understood.
You mean, you meant.
It's about the.
The fu- the fire chief. Box technically.
The Knox box. Right, that's something that we have in our current land use ordinance where, uh. Our fire chief recommended that for large commercial operations. I, that's something that I just put in there. That's something that you can have removed. That's ideal for large growing facilities that are thousands of square feet large. As opposed to someone who's just operating it out of their home. But that can be removed if that's something that the select board would like to have taken out.
I just don't understand why it's there. What is the purpose of the lock box?
So the knock, it's actually a Knox box. When you have a fire or the fire department has to get in, they have a key. It's kept in a box.
Ah.
That allows you to get into a business.
Okay.
Without breaking down the door.
Got it. So it's like a key holder or something?
I, yeah, we call, I, in New Jersey, we call them Knox box, but.
It's just.
It is a locked box essentially that you keep the key in.
So like what the real estate agents would use, they'll put it on the door.
Well, it's.
And if you've got the code, you can open it up and the key's inside of it.
It's a little different than that.
Right.
But I don't wanna get into that, but.
I got, I got, I understand what you meant. I, my, my association with lock boxes is banks.
Fire department, our fire department access to commercial buildings.
Okay. Makes total sense.
Have you talked to any of the caregivers about this?
Stan, have you?
It's hard, it's hard to talk to the caregivers because we can't find out who they are right now. Uh, that's a protected list. If I knew, uh, say at my house, uh, if there was a problem there or a perceived problem. I can call the state and say, is this a caregiver? And they'll tell me yes or no. But I can't ask them for a list of caregivers. So what this will do is just a registration and so if the police get a call, they automatically know it is probably, uh, marijuana here. Uh, if they see a lot of cars coming and going at a certain house, they can check on the list that we have. And they would know, okay, uh, they've got a permit from the state to have a medical marijuana here. Instead of just cars coming and going at the same place all the time and not being recognized to the state.
So, under four point two point seven. Is there an implied liability there being enforced on the town? Um. The, the applicant is supposed to describe how their equipment and parts inventory are stored. To avoid unintended exposure. Uh, we're not talking about security here. We're talking about unintended exposure. Meaning someone walks in with a higher hose, a fire hose and.
Correct. In our, in our land use ordinance for the general standards. We do have, uh, a section for storage of materials.
Yep.
So that, uh, things like rats and bugs don't get into the. Usually that's more restaurant based, but just anything in general so that ver- uh, vermin don't get in and ruin the supplies. And also for this, it is a security thing is it goes into the, ties into the security as well of. You know, the, the door's gonna be locked at night essentially.
So.
If, but nothing's gonna stay on there that.
Yep.
And things, as you said, um, things aren't close to any potential fire hazards or whatnot.
I, I was just gonna suggest you include mention of security in that par- paragraph. Because you are talking unintended exposures, but security's a separate issue. And it does require locked doors and lights and stuff like that. Um, so you might require them to include a description about. How security in the building is, how the building is secured. That's all.
Okay.
Okay?
Do we have to send this in front of the voters to change?
Yes.
So we're just voting on putting our, putting it on the ballot?
Correct. And I would suggest too, I mean, it, you'll set the, the rate for the license. At. That's, that's something that you've set, not by ordinance. But as part of the licensing and permit fee schedule that you set every year.
The only issue I have with that is why are we gonna charge them? All we wanna do is know who's here. That would be the only, my only issue is why, other than maybe administrative, administration costs.
That's really all the, I mean, unless Stan has otherwise, that's pretty much all the fee with the use for, just the time.
Do you remember?
Had to send out notice.
What the application fee was in Demer Scott for caregivers?
Oh, well, first, first, we didn't have one for caregivers, we had one for the storefront. There's, there's is five thousand a year.
For the storefront.
Application fee is more like the big commercial grows, which is a few in Walderboro. Uh, one is right on Route one into Moose Crossup. Uh, that's huge. And you've got no income from it, both the two stores that are over here that just are operating. So it's trying to get some money, uh, into the budget. There's always new laws and stuff that we're reading and trying to deal with the legislature and the marijuana policy committee. And so it's just a lot of time spent and we don't get reimbursed for it, so.
I would say with one facility in town, we have spent an inordinate amount of time of both Max. Stan and the police department. That we just don't get reimbursed for.
And, and are we expecting the police to patrol these places at night to ensure?
It's not, it's nothing like that, but I, I do think we need to be. Proactive in that and realize that we need to treat it like a liquor license.
Yeah.
We really, we really should.
Yep.
If you're going to hold. It's, give the owner the opportunity to say, yes, we should be charging. We should be licensing and we should be charging a fee for that license.
Yeah, it's a controlled.
And you can have tiers of licenses. The caregiver license could be, say, a twenty-five dollar fee. A storefront, like Stan mentioned is in Demer Scott is five thousand dollars. You know, there's, there's things that you can. Set.
Do we wanna mention in here that if an owner is dealing with loitering folks, that they do have recourse to calling the police if they can't get them to leave? That would be section four point six point five point one.
Yes, it is.
It's their obligation to make them, to ask them to leave, but it.
Right.
Doesn't give them means to enforce that if they can't deal with it themselves.
I don't think we have to put that in there.
Don't have to put it.
That goes with, that's common sense.
Understood. Alright.
So we could actually set this up for a public hearing, correct?
Correct. Again, we can do, just let me know when you would like to have it.
I like the ordinance.
Yep.
I prefer to do it at the second meeting in March.
Yeah.
It gives us time to advertise.
Somebody like to make a motion to put this on the agenda for the second meeting of March as a public hearing?
Here, I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
My second, Dan.
Any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor? So we're set with that? Moving along, life safety ordinance. What do we have here?
That would be Max and Stan again.
Yes, life safety ordinance. Um, very similar reading to the medical marijuana licensing ordinance. Uh, from short-term rentals to people, to just regular rental units. This is just to, for keep track and have a process for these. That, um. I don't really have too much to add on to that and I can pass off to Stan to talk about it.
And I will tell you, this is one of the biggest issues. Stan, I'm sure will talk more about it. This is one of the biggest issues that Stan and Richard confront. Is people who are renting and they have issues with the rental.
Okay, yep. So this, uh. Safety ordinance stats, stat it out like is a short-term, uh, rental ordinance. But it's, uh, anything that goes from less than twenty-four hours to three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, and what it is, is we'd go in and inspect it. Set up to do this every three years, but you can be more or less, uh, years, uh, to be re-inspected. So it'd be for life safety issues like, uh, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors. If there's a gas stove now, they have to have a, a gas detector. Carbon monoxide. Or LP snapper. Also the egress, uh, a lot of cottages have set two stories, but they don't have egress windows or. The septic, we don't know if they're, uh. Approved or how old they are. Uh, a lot of them on the, on the water. Uh, they're for like a two-bedroom house and all of a sudden they're renting out at, you know, uh. Ten people can sleep here and stuff like that. But, uh, talking with Paul Smeltzer, uh, he'd really like to have it also. So that these places get inspected. So the registration fee, it'd be, the first one would be set by you and then it'd be a, like a re-inspection fee every three years. Uh, the other thing is, uh, people are coming from away and renting. They don't have a clue of, like, emergency numbers or who to contact. They usually go through a realtor. Uh, it should be a twenty-four hour number. And it's also make sure that the trash is picked up. Uh, and stuff like that on these places that they rent. It also, um, in Warren has this. So you go in and inspect anything that's rented, including mobile homes or houses or apartments. We've got issues, uh, on Coles Hill and some other places around that never get inspected, even, uh, right there on. Friendship Street. And I was just in there with Richard the other day. And fire extinguishers and stuff like that in rental units. But that's what we're trying to do is make it safer. Because there's a lot more people that are renting out their houses, uh, weekly or whatever. And that's what this is about, so.
And it's not yearly, it's.
Yeah, this would be a one-time thing and then.
Every three years. And again, it's to develop the list so that if there are issues, we know who to call. Because a lot of times, and I'll give an example, a couple of weeks ago Stan got a phone call. Um, we, there's been no, there's no gas to the stove, there's no. The toilet won't flush. You know, if something's frozen, who do they call? And it helps if we then can make the phone call and say. You know, we're trying to get this resolved. It would, also, one of the issues I shared with you recently was one of the rentals where the, there was no heat in the house. And the woman had to be removed from the house before something terrible happened. That, that would be a registered rental. And you would set the fee. This isn't, I'll just be honest with you, this is a life safety issue. It's not a. It's, it's not a money-making. Your, whatever fee you charge isn't gonna. Have much impact on offsetting the cost of doing the inspection.
Like Warren gets like ten dollars plus five dollars a renewal, so it's just more to have it registered and, and inspect it. Uh, I went through with them when I worked over there. I'd go through with books, their rental units. And sometimes it was a fire extinguisher, sometimes they've been used but hadn't been replaced. Smoke detectors, the batteries were pulled out of them to use in the kid's toy or something and. You know, if you, you're renting a place and you come in the middle of the night and there's a fire, which is, the reason I bring this up, uh. This happened to a relative of mine in Booth Bay that came here from California. So it's just something that needs to be done and, uh, talking with Paul, Paul Smeltzer, the fire chief, is all part also. There's places that they go that, you know, there's no smoke detectors and the fire and. It just helped if it, if there was, uh, I don't wanna say hold their feet to the fire, but, uh. Be ho- if they knew that there was gonna be inspected, they would probably take care of some of the issues.
I think egress windows is gonna be tough.
Yeah, if there's a lot of.
All the houses in Walderboro and.
Right.
I got houses that I couldn't have, uh.
Well, we wouldn't.
I couldn't pass inspection because I didn't have an egress window.
Right.
So, so if I went by this, I couldn't, I couldn't rent it out.
Yeah.
And that was, that's, that's not gonna be good if people wanna rent their house up, they can't.
Rent it, uh, but we would know, you know, the fire department would know if they got there, no, we can't go into the window, it's not big enough. You gotta go through the ground floor or whatever. Uh, it's just a, it's a life safety registration thing, nothing more than that.
I, I don't wanna see it, but there is nothing in here about sprinkler systems either. Typically, when you're building a rental unit. Nowadays, you have to put in a, well, you, you.
Yeah.
You gotta put in a sprinkler system and they're expensive.
Forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably more than that now. It's not worth it, so why would you wanna build a rental if it is not worth it? Unless you have a huge, huge complex.
You know, we're not going, we're not looking to make somebody change everything over. We just wanna know what's there. Yeah, we're not going, we're not looking to make somebody change everything over. We just want to know what's there.
Is this, is this intended to be an ordinance, or is this intended to be some kind of local regulation? Because if it's an ordinance, don't we need to write it up as an ordinance and have a reference to main law, main statute? And say, we're doing this pursuant to so-and-so, and?
I wouldn't call it an ordinance. I'd call it a registration, uh, so that
A registration process. Okay.
I still think it would fall under, we still have to have the legal authority to do it. So, I mean, we can do that for the next meeting and write it up formally.
I'd love to see, if we're going to do it as an ordinance, I'd like to see.
Well, we weren't even sure you guys would want to
Yeah, I get it.
You know, I mean, it's a hard, well, what's a life worth? That's, you're a good landlord.
For the most part. I have to put up, I have to put up with stuff.
But, but what I'm saying is, you would make sure that there was a working, a working, you know, smoke detector.
If they don't tamper with them.
Well, I'm just
And that's, and that's happened, and that, and that, and then you turn around and it comes back on the, the person that has the rental, if, even if their tenants mess with them, and it, it makes it uncomfortable, because why would I want to go out?
But you might not be in the house, but then somebody's inspecting it, and when you want to know if there was no smoke detector working, then you could charge them for destroying it.
When they finally leave, that's when I notice it.
Right, but hopefully you have good tenants, and it, you know, it's hard.
The human part between, trust me.
But what we've tried to do is come up with, again, and it, it's not a, it's not a money-making. It, it's a life safety issue.
Yeah.
You know, where it's, again, we can write it up like an ordinance, and you guys can have another gander at it. Is there any suggestion you would like to make?
I got to think about this.
Okay, I figured. I can tell you that the calls that we get in the office when there's a situation like this.
Yeah, if you've got no enforcement authority, then you're
Right. We have no
Then you're pulling women out of houses who are freezing to death because
Right.
It was a lousy landlord.
Or, or sometimes it's the rent to sublet to this, to that, and who do you call? And sometimes the numbers we have of the owner that are in our system are old numbers, and it's not the current cell phone number. You know, I mean, that's, that's the issue, is, again, you can't regulate neighborly, good landlord-tenant relations. It's, it's very hard, and, but that's a big portion of what Stan and Richard, our health officer, are doing.
I think I'm more concerned about the situation where you have someone leasing or renting for less than a year, but like more than a month. I mean, it's become a semi-permanent home for them. And you want to try to ensure that in this community at least, if they're living in that situation, um, they're, they're living safely, and that, that, uh, people's lives aren't being put at risk. I, I don't see that being an issue. I mean, if you're intending to, to rent something out to folks, there's an obligation that they pay rent, absolutely, but there's also, I think, a concurrent obligation that the landlord provide a safe environment for the people who are living there.
And it's, it's the smoke detector, fire extinguisher. If, if you were selling your house, you would have to have smoke detectors and
You'd have to have those in your house.
Fire extinguishers, I, right.
But I don't think we ought to be picking on people here either.
I don't, I don't think it's trying to pick on people. I think, and, and some of it is people just aren't aware.
Yeah.
And potentially, the house that was lost on Noble Borough Road, I mean, obviously, the one that was very well-covered, it was putting, something fell out of the, but maybe that extra few minutes of something beeping and going off would have made a difference. It's, that's what we're talking about, is just making that a little bit of difference.
Do you want a motion on this, Mr. Chairman?
I thought we were going to put it in form and bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Yes, cool. Table it till
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll just put it on the agenda for another, for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Bob's adjustment to the agenda, ten point three, the EDC to the CDC, is that what you?
Oh.
And I believe the big dog.
I didn't come up with a rap for this microphone, and I feel like I should have one.
You should.
This will be, this will be a short conversation, I think. So, um, uh, the CTC's been, been going along, but we're at a point now where we've had a few meetings where we haven't had enough people to, uh, you know, do things like vote on, on a motion. And right now, we don't have anything to vote on, but it feels like we're wasting time and being less efficient. So, that's why I'm making the recommendation that we dissolve the CTC and put it back onto the EDC as basically an agenda item. Uh, we wouldn't be giving up anything. I'd still be there. Max is at those meetings. Bob is at those meetings. Uh, Richard Hofstes is getting ready to, to step down. He wasn't planning on renewing. So, this is really is to keep our broadband efforts moving along smoothly. And if we make this an agenda item for the EDC, we'll actually get more brain power at those meetings. We'll have more people at the table to, to discuss things. That's, that's it. That's my whole speech.
I'd, I'd move that we merge the CD, CTC into the EDC and
Merge them back, because I think that's where they came from.
Yeah, that's where, that's where the CTC started.
Yeah, it did.
Oh, and the chair of, of the EDC is aware of, of this plan. I emailed, I emailed Jen and asked that question, so this won't surprise anybody.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor? You are set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No old business that I see. Oh, what do we get here? No agenda items for the next meeting. One of them's, uh, application for the rentals?
Mm-hmm.
What else? Anybody else get anything for the agenda for the next meeting?
I'll ask Karen Anne to come back.
Okay. I guess we're all set. So, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? In and out. Exactly.